I'd like to call the order, the regular meeting, excuse me, on June 11th, 2018. Please join Councilmember Loretano in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we ask for your safety, we ask for your blessing, we ask that you guide us in this council to make good decisions for our citizens and our community. We ask for health for our citizens, we ask that also you protect our citizens, we ask that you protect those that serve in the military and have a watchful eye and keep your hands wrapped around their families while they're gone. We ask that you watch out for our police, fire, and all of our public servants who work for our citizens and keep them safe so they may all return home to their families as well. We ask that you keep our city in your graces. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Loretano. We're all here this evening, so we'll go on to the communication, and the first one is to recognize individuals that have served on the Water Conservation Committee. Mark Holmes, Water Resources Manager, will present. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor Lord, and members of the council. My team is here. So we're excited to be here this evening to recognize the Water Conservation Committee. The committee worked very hard over the last two years reviewing the many city planning documents, absorbing a voluminous amount of information with numerous presentations from both internal departments and external professionals, and touring city facilities to better understand the scale of water projects. The committee worked very hard to incorporate the wealth of information into a comprehensive recommendations that you were presented on the work session on May 21st. While the committee represents very diverse stakeholders, they were always willing to find consensus. I would also like to recognize a chair and vice chair that provided outstanding support and leadership in the committee, and lastly, we'd like to recognize the outstanding professional facilitator Theresa Mackinon, who ensured every voice was heard with interests that were being presented. This has been the hardest-working, most committed stakeholder committee we've had the pleasure of working alongside, and Mayor Lord, if you'd be so kind to please come forward and assist with recognition, we'll call the names, have them come up forward, and if they can please remain up front for a photo op with the council would be appreciated. Mr. Chairman, Mario Columbia.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Marlon Booth. Jack Gilmore.
They did see there's a star in this, didn't they?
Yes, they are stars.
Susan Kagan.
Thank you.
Laura Kineau. Peter Minaric. Randy Smith. And Pete Takey.
Thank you.
Can you get a group shot with the council?
Yes, of course. Do you want us over here or where?
Yes, can the council all come up?
Oh, sure.
You go back in the corner.
Well, let's go back in the corner.
Sure.
Yeah, go to the corner. I'm gonna help my jacket on.
Thank you.
Okay. Come to the corner. Okay, where's my stool? Whoa. We're open standing here. We get, we get Wally. We get the down. Okay, that's it. One, two, three. Wait, use some Wally. You're good, and then Wally. Right. She's not gonna smile. I'm gonna direct her smile towards me. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Geez. Let me drop one. One, two, three. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you, so much.
Oh, there you are. Thanks. Thank you very much.
No.
Am I supposed to have to get out of line?
Yeah, you only had to turn around.
I'll do it wrong.
Oh, or Mark. Oh, my gosh.
I'm going to take Mayor's privilege tonight because Mark is retiring from the city.
Daddy!
Yes.
She gets it.
And I know the committee how you feel about him because I feel the same way.
Oh, my gosh.
Mark and I did a lot of things at ASU. You brought me into ASU, into those studies, and it was so much fun, and going down and being questioned, and we would give them problems, and they would have to solve these problems. Well, tell them a little about what it was.
So, yes, we had a number of projects we presented with ASU looking at objectives in conservation, efficiency, sustainability, and we presented and posed these projects to ASU, and then they would have teams within their classrooms that would then put together in a very short order a project and then have ideas, and so we brought down council and went down to ASU, and then you asked questions and asked questions to students on methodology or the results and how they implemented, and it really caught them on guard, and they were doing great, and it was a great experience. And our relationship with ASU has been fantastic because that's a real-world application, these are real projects that they were helping us, we were getting minds that were outside the city parameters and the city way of thinking, and getting some fresh minds to look at new problems, and it was very interesting, and it's been a great, great relationship.
Before you go, council, any comments? Because I know I have a great, strong feeling for him, so I'm gonna just start down at this end. Councilman Stiff?
I've already expressed to Mark privately, but when I got onto AMWA, I knew, other than water being wet, that was pretty much all I knew, and it was because of Mark and his ability to communicate in a simple fashion that I could understand it, where things are at, so I expressed to Mark how much I appreciated his imparting some wisdom on me, and I hope, and I'm pretty confident that you've done the same with the staff so that when you leave, the hole won't be nearly as deep, but there'll still be a hole, but thank you for everything you've done. Thank you.
Joe?
You know, Mark, we had a little chat before the meeting, and you know you're gonna be missed, especially all your expertise in this, but I suspect we're gonna hook up at a ballgame later on down the road, so I'm sure I'll see you again.
Look forward to it.
Wally?
Yes.
Wally?
Well, Mark, you really have put Goodyear on the map for water conservation and for being the guru of knowing where water is in the state of Arizona. We became friends whenever I got involved in the Kyle Center for Water Policy and then Water Now Alliance, and just the people that you have come in contact with and shared your expertise with has been amazing, and you are so well-known throughout the Western United States, and I'm sure before you're done, everybody's gonna know who you are. But thank you so much, and thank you for your dedication to our city. We know how important this was to you, and you made sure that you taught us the importance of all of this, and we do appreciate it. We wish you the very, very best, and you did promise me you were helping Gretchen passing on so that we could get her in Water Now Alliance as well, so thank you so very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Sherry?
Well, thank you. It's so hard when you get down to this end, and everyone said, "You are so knowledgeable in this area," and for all you've done for the city, we do owe you a great thank you because I think that whole deal with SRP, you had such great leadership in that, that you've set us up for the next 100 years, so thank you for that, and you made water fun. You made it fun, you made it exciting, you made it interesting and not complicated, because water is just how it all works, and the wet water and the money and all that, it just, you made it interesting to follow how it works, and so it's, as I think Joe said, that there'll be, or Bill, down at that end, they were saying there's a big hole to fill, and I think that hole will have a lot of water in it thanks to you. So we appreciate all you've done, and you deserve a wonderful retirement, and we know where to find you, and we will.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thanks.
Brandon?
Yeah, likewise, I think congratulations on retirement, and like everybody said, I think you've left a very positive mark for the future of Goodyear, set us up well for the future, our future growth, our future residents, they won't know, but they'll have you to thank for moving here and having a supply of water to be able to use, so thank you for setting us up for success and leading your team and leading the different committees, and just making, like everybody said, making water understandable because I did not know as much as you were able to teach me over and over and over again, so I appreciate it, and yes, thank you for your service, and yeah, congratulations on retirement.
Thank you very much.
And I shall miss you, Mark. You're always a delight to be with, and everything they said is so true about you, and I wish you well. I have to tell you, retirement's not bad. You could always run for office someday, you know? I mean, there's always, there's all sorts of doors opening.
Is the pay gonna be right? No, I'm kidding. That was a work session.
Thank you, that helped me. So anyway, I congratulate you.
Thank you.
My best.
Can I say your team?
Yes, yes.
It's been a sincere honor and privilege to work for the city of Goodyear, the citizens of the city, but I must be frank that really the success was by your inspiration, by your great leadership in making the right decisions, and some of them were tough decisions, and I can tell you that the state of water for the city of Goodyear is strong, and there's a lot of time to plan for the future, and you've got some tough decisions in the future to address, but strong leadership, you have really ensured success for the city, and I must thank you for your leadership. Thank you so much. It's been an honor.
Would Sergeant First Class Doyle J. Davis come forth?
This is a real honor for me, and you, most of you know, married to a United States Air Force Colonel, moved 22 times, 30 years he served, I served 24 of his 30 years, and I say I serve just like your family serves. And so today is the U.S. Army's 243rd Anniversary Day. Can you believe that? June 14th, let's give a round of applause for that. So I'm going to read Sergeant a proclamation, so, "Whereas on June 14, 1775, the Second Continental Congress representing the citizens of 13 American colonies authorized the establishment of the Continental Army, and whereas the collective expression of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused authorization and organization of the Army led to the adoption of the Declaration of Independence and the codification of the new nation's basic principles and values in our Constitution. And whereas 243 years, the U.S. Army's central mission has been to fight and win nations' wars. And the model, whereas the model of duty, honor, and country is the creed by which American soldiers live their lives and serve. Whereas no matter what the cause, the location, the magnitude, the future conflict, the United States can rely on the Army to produce well-trained, well-led, highly motivated soldiers to carry out the missions entrusted in them. Whereas the citizens of Goodyear, Arizona, have proudly served and made ultimate sacrifices for our nation's freedom while serving the United States Army and other branches of our nation's military. Now therefore it be resolved that I, Georgia Lord, the mayor of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, do here proclaim June 14th, 2018, as the U.S. Army 243rd Anniversary Day, and recognize the historical significance of the Army, given under my hand in these free United States on the 11th day of June 2018, to which I have caused the seal of the city of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public." Could we give a round of applause for this sergeant?
standing ovation. I know my brothers and sisters in arms are very grateful. Thank you.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would any of the audience like to speak? All right, then we're gonna get on with, will the city clerks please read consent, excuse me, city clerk, please read consent agenda items 6.1 to 6.6 by title only, please?
Approval of the minutes. 6.2, approve a new Series 12 liquor license for native grill and wings. 6.3, approve Amendment 4 to the IGA between the city of Goodyear and the Regional Public Transit Authority for the continued provision of transit services. 6.4, authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for emergency planning and services. 6.5, approve the replat of Lot 2 of the market at Estrella Falls. 6.6, approve a fiscal year 18 budget transfer from the Water Operating Fund balance for new development-related water meters.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from this consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item? All right, could I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second. All right, a motion from Councilman Stiff and a second from Councilman Loretano. So roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, let's get on to the business items, then. I would like council to remind council to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete and there's a motion on the table. So we're going to start out with a public hearing to consider a use permit for Starbucks drive-through. I'm opening the public hearing. Good evening, Alex. Lieutenant's key planner, two to present.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The request tonight is for a use permit for a drive-through facility on the subject property, which is currently zoned for commercial uses within the Palm Valley Phase 8 PAD. It's located at the northwest corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Coronado Road, which is just north of the Popeyes Restaurant. This slide shows the conceptual site plan and landscape plan for the project. The main entry is located on the north portion of the site. This is a write-in-only, so residents coming southbound on Pebble Creek Parkway can enter through the main drive. People coming in northbound can take a left at the light on Coronado Road. The project has a shared access driveway through the Popeyes site, and that, I don't know if I said it already, but that is a signal on Coronado Road. The building is 2,400 square feet and includes 300 square feet of patio on the north side of the building. The applicant worked with staff on elevations to ensure consistency with the Cobblestone Creek commercial development. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on March 6, 2018. Staff and the applicant attended, but no one from the public attended. We also have not yet, or not received any inquiries or opposition to the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the item on March, excuse me, May 30th, and based on review for compliance with all applicable codes and requirements for use permit approval, staff recommends approval subject to the stipulations included in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? Yes, he does.
Good evening. I'm Rob Henry with CEG Applied Sciences. I just am available for any questions if there's any issues that I can address for you.
Thank you very much. Did you need his name and address?
We can get it from Alex.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. They may have, and so we'll just wait and see. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the request for a convenient use of drive-through restaurant to be constructed within the Palm Valley Phase 8 PAD located at the northwest corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Coronado Road, subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton, and a second from?
Second.
From Councilman Stip. All right, open for council questions or comments. Vice Mayor?
I have a concern with this drive-through now that Starbucks has changed their policy to allow folks to congregate in their facilities without purchasing, and I don't want this to become a magnet for homeless people simply because it's beside a park. The park is right there. And this was not a concern to me a month ago, but it is now that they've made the big announcement, so how are they gonna deal with it? Is the gentleman that spoke, is he the owner? Is he the, just the company to manage it, or what?
He's the, with the engineer group, working on behalf of the developer.
I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer that question. I don't speak on behalf of operations.
And that's okay. Clarify this for her. I don't believe that is a park, that's just, is that correct? That's just landscaping.
Big playground there.
Pardon?
Across the, yeah, it's across the canal.
Across the canal.
They do play there.
Mayor?
Yes.
Portales Park is across the canal to the west of the.
So that's really under our jurisdiction, so can I ask somebody from the police department to come up, or somebody from Code to come up and address that? So say your concern again.
Well, I just hope that they'll watch it and just make sure that we don't have an issue there.
So what's the repercussion? I mean, what, so if somebody complained, how would we handle that?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Lord.
Thank you.
And council. Just that, it's private property, so if that is their policies and procedures, what we would ask them is if they did want somebody removed, that they would have to call us, obviously, and we would trespass them. Now, if there's anything else illegally going on or anything to that nature, we would take care of that business, so I'm sure it will be watched as it grows, because that's probably a concern that the entire nation has now with.
They do.
You know, allowing them to be there, but they do have the right to allow them there.
Right. I just don't want any issues with the kids at the park, even though it is across the canal, they can still wander to the corner, take a left, and they're in the park, and they wouldn't necessarily be in that parcel normally because there's nothing there right now.
Right, so we would work with the HOA, because I believe that's an HOA park, not a city park.
I think it is, too.
We would work with them on those trespassing laws also.
Okay, thank you so much. That's it. Does that help?
Yeah, certainly.
Any other questions?
Mayor, do you have one?
Yes, Councilman Stiff?
Chief, before you sit down, and I'm not sure if you know this or if this is for Nathan, are our parks posted as no trespassing, no loitering?
And I'll let Nathan answer, too, if he wants, but all our parks have a set of rules that is posted, along with dates and times, and at any time, they would be subjected to be trespassed if they're not during those times or if they're breaking any of those rules.
Okay, but we do have rules posted, so I don't think they have to.
I see Nathan coming up, so I think it, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Stip, the park hours are posted 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and closed after that, so anyone in the park after that are basically trespassing at that time.
Okay, thanks.
Is that good? Okay, are we all set? Let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome. Please go back and tell them welcome to Goodyear, the engineer. All right, the next item is a public hearing to consider approving the truth in taxation increase in the final budget for the fiscal year 2018-19. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and Lori Wigan-Raw, Finance Manager for the Budget and Research, will be presenting. Lori?
Thank you. We are on the second to last of the various actions to formally adopt the FY19 budget, and I'll be doing a presentation on the budget adoption as well as on the truth in taxation item. Just real quick, again, this is one of those complex meetings, kind of going over what we're gonna do. We're having this public hearing that you've opened, and you will do the presentation, and then you have the opportunity for a comment. You'll close the public hearing, then we'll ask you to approve the truth in taxation increase, and then, according to state law, you have to hold a special meeting in which to adopt the budget. So there's no changes in the final budget from what we presented, and what you adopted is the tentative budget two weeks ago, or I'm sorry, in May, and so we're just doing a quick overview of the budget again. It's $447.4 million, and of that, you can see the resources, quite a few of the resources are dedicated to the capital program, and if we look at the next page, you can see that the CIP without carryovers is 35% of the budget, with carryovers, it's in excess of 50% of the budget, so it's a very large year for the CIP, and we'll review a couple of the projects in just a minute. The budget does include $9.7 million in supplemental budget additions. Of those, about $4.4 million are ongoing and about $5.4 are one-time in nature. Some of the highlights that are included in the supplemental budget are the hiring and training of 14 sworn firefighter positions to staff the EMR fire station. That fire station is currently under design and will begin construction soon or in the future, but it takes time to hire fire staff, get them trained, and through academies and those types of things, so we'll start hiring them soon. That's $1.9 million in ongoing and one-time expenses, and that is also funded for the first five years, the operating portion, by Newland. The budget also includes adding three sworn police positions. One is a school resource officer that's partially funded by the school district, and then in addition, there are two narcotics officers, and that's about $800,000 of the budget. There's about $1.1 million primarily in one-time costs associated with providing for technology enhancements and temporary staffing needs to continue.
The park hours are posted 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM and closed after that. So anyone in the park after that are basically trespassing at that time.
Okay. Thanks.
That's wonderful. Okay. Are we all set? Let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Welcome. Please go back and tell them welcome to Goodyear, the engineer. All right. The next item is a public hearing to consider approving the truth in tax, in taxation increase in the final budget for the fiscal year 2018-19. So I'm going to open the public hearing. And Lori Wigan-Raw, Finance Manager for the Budget and Research, will be presenting. Lori?
Thank you. We are on the second to last of the various actions to formally adopt the FY19 budget. And I'll be doing a presentation on the budget adoption, as well as on the truth in taxation item. Just real quick, again, this is one of those complex meetings, kind of going over what we're going to do. We're having this public hearing that you've opened. Any public, we'll do the presentation, and then you have the opportunity for a comment. You'll close the public hearing, then we'll ask you to approve the truth in taxation increase. And then, according to state law, you have to hold a special meeting in which to adopt the budget. So there is no changes in the final budget from what we presented, and what you adopted is the tentative budget two weeks ago, or I'm sorry, in May. And so we're just doing a quick overview of the budget again. It's $447.4 million. And of that, you can see the resources, quite a few of the resources are dedicated to the capital program. And if we look at the next page, you can see that the CIP without carryovers is 35% of the budget. With carryovers, it's in excess of 50% of the budget. So it's a very large year for the CIP, and we'll review a couple of the projects in just a minute. The budget does include $9.7 million in supplemental budget additions. Of those, about $4.4 million are ongoing and about $5.4 are one-time in nature. Some of the highlights that are included in the supplemental budget are the hiring and training of 14 sworn firefighter positions to staff the EMR fire station. That fire station is currently under design and will be, begin construction soon or in the future. But it takes time to hire fire staff, get them trained and through academies and those types of things, so we'll start hiring them soon. That's $1.9 million in ongoing and one-time expenses. And that is also funded for the first five years, the operating portion by the develop, by Newland. The budget also includes adding three sworn police positions. One is a school resource officer that's partially funded by the school district. And then in addition, there are two narcotics officers, and that's about $800,000 of the budget. There's about $1.1 million primarily in one-time costs associated with providing for technology enhancements and temporary staffing needs to continue to support the high levels of development that the city is experiencing. We certainly have had some significant building permit activity through the last, through the last year, so we're anticipating that to continue. There's also in the sanitation fund, we're adding a bulk collection crew. As a result of adding that crew, we are able to eliminate a temporary, so it's about a $91,000 ongoing annual expense, $300,000 one-time expense for the initial equipment. And then with our lottery funds, we're adding Sunday and holiday service on the Zoom. Just again, to kind of, since the capital seems to be the message of this particular budget year, or a major message of the year, some of the larger projects are listed here. Of course, we heard earlier about, talking about water. A major water project that the city is undertaking is that project to gain access to our CIP water, get it delivered, get it transported here, and then to build a water plant in which to treat and then distribute the, the water. There's an expansion going on at, at Site 12, which is a water site, and also at the Goodyear Reclamation Facility, two, two, two larger capital projects. And as I mentioned earlier, Fire Station 186 is being designed and built. And then in addition, we're also designing and building the replacement for existing Fire Station 181. Some of the other projects, couple of street projects and initial scoping on the police operations facility. And then also the design portion of the recreation campus site. And again, in that CIP project loan reserve are the funds that were originally budgeted for the construction of the recreation campus projects. And as we move forward, and once we have a better idea of the costs and the timelines for those projects, they'll come back to you. So that's kind of an overview of the, the budget. Just to kind of walk you through what truth in taxation involves. Truth in taxation is a federal, it's federal, boy. It's a state law. Essentially, our state constitution controls property taxes in a number of ways. One of those is that the state constitution limits our ability to increase our property tax levy for the primary, which is the portion that pays the ongoing operation or contributes towards ongoing operations. It can grow by no more than 2% per year, plus new properties that are added. However, state statute requires that if you're going to increase the dollar value of your levy, even if it's just to, even if your rate were staying the same, but your levy was going to go up as a result, you're required to go through a truth in taxation process. And this year, the truth in taxation amount that requires your approval is $177,625. And I'll show you this slide, which kind of explains where that comes from or the source of our property tax levy. So this year's levy for the primary was $8.7 million. You can see then in the, in that column called "primary," that $8.3 million of next year's levy is from our existing properties. Another, over $200,000 is coming from new properties. And then there was $364,000 worth of appreciation on our existing properties. But in order to capture that 2% growth that we're permitted to have, we had to add that $177,625, which is what requires the action on the truth in taxation. We've posted, or we followed the requirements to place two advertisements that are specified by statute. And we have done the press release that were required in order for the council to approve the truth in taxation increase. And again, this slide just shows you a comparison of this year's property tax levy to what is being requested in next year's budget, noting that on a $100,000 home, which is the dollar value used in the truth in taxation documentation, the city's combined levy would be $173.50. Again, the only thing you're dealing with today is the primary property tax. That is where the truth in taxation statute applies. Secondary is driven by whatever our debt service is. And so with that, what the actions that we're looking for today is for you to finish the public hearing, asking that you will approve the truth in taxation increase, and then that you would approve the final adoption of the budget.
Thank you, Lori. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the truth in taxation increase from $177,625 for the fiscal year 2018-19? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. I'll look this way. Any, hello? Any discussion on this side? No? All right, look to this side. Yes. Councilman Pizzillo?
Can you go back, I think a slide or two? Hold, right, no, one more. Right there. The truth in taxation is because of the 2% actual levy increase, but is, is there a way, I think it's a little less than about 1 point some odd percent, I don't know what the number is, but the actual increase to current residents as a result of both the primary and the secondary combined together?
Well, on a property with a $100,000 home, it's a penny from the city of Goodyear. So if you had a $300,000.
Your home would be three cents. That's, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions? No questions down there? Councilman Stip? Okay. All right. So let's have a roll call vote on this, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano? Aye. Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Lori. All right. So now we're going to recess this regular, we're going to recess the regular meeting, and we're going to convene a special meeting per ARS 42-17105 to determine and adopt estimates of proposed expenditures for the purpose stated in the published proposal. Okay? So we've recessed this meeting, and now I will call a special meeting on the date 6/11, and everyone is present. We will now consider adopting the final budget. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2018-1846 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1846, determining and adopting the final estimates of proposed expenditures by the city of Goodyear for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and, I mean, Councilman Pizzillo. I'm back to doing that again. Councilman Pizzillo and a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. To the right, any discussion? To the left? Councilman Stip?
I was, I'm not going to reiterate the objection that I had at the, uh, prelimit, I'm not even going to get it right.
Tentative.
Thank you. The tentative budget. Other than to just state how significantly opposed I am to this particular budget, and I want that noted in the record, but I won't rehash my entire statement. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Pizzillo?
Just from a numbers standpoint, the good news we got the other day about, what was it, $600,000 of estimates from revenue sharing were above what was put into the budget, even though it's not affecting this budget here. What does that reside in? Just extra fund balance that gets carried over so that money's there next year?
Yes. Mayor Councilmember, there was, we did compare the last data we got from the state on state shared revenues. And again, remember that their revenue estimate for both vehicle license taxes and sales taxes is also an estimate.
Understand.
But yes, the amount that we're expecting higher than budget is $630,000. Of that, about four, about almost $200,000, $190,000 is one-time HERF money. But yes, that would be kind of the first contribution to fund balance. Again, it would help us through the year if we have unexpected revenue declines or unexpected cost increases. We know we're starting the year off a little bit ahead.
So that money's just sitting in the fund, fund balance. You have enough of an appropriation in case you need to spend it where you could do a budget transfer to get to it, but it's not increasing because it's the same number that we had before.
Correct. We're not, we haven't planned to spend that in this final budget. It will be available if there were some reason to use it during the year.
Hopefully, we don't have to, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other, oh yes, Councilman Loretano?
I just, I want to thank you for all your hard work and everything with regard to this and all the staff and everybody. I, I do support this and what we've been doing, because I think it does bring what our residents want with everything from the rec center and the increase in public safety, fire and police in the streets. So I do appreciate that, and I, again, thank you for your hard work.
Any other comments? Well, I want to thank you too. I love the way you present, and you're very helpful to us. And sometimes the evening is a little difficult, but you handle it well with a smile. And I've come through, and I really, I really appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that, Council, you've asked for, answered all the citizens' questions this year, the things that really were meaningful to them and that they wanted. And it is a big year on CIP. We are spending a lot of money, but there were a lot of things that got delayed during the downturn. And I think fire and police is the most important thing that we came forth with. And then that, finally, that recreational area, people are getting, where they want to park and they want to, so much there, and we're going to be able to do that for them. So at this time, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Nay.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Oh, and now we're going to reconvene the regular meeting. And so at 7.3, the next item is to consider approving the preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel 11.D1. Alex, you're up at the board again to present.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel 11-D1. It's in the, it's located in the Lucero neighborhood, which is the upcoming community at the entry of Estrella. The final plats for the first phase have gone through staff review, and Newland has begun working on Phase 2. This parcel is just north of Estrella Parkway. The blue line represents that Hillside Drive, the main spine road within the Lucero community. The Lucero PAD was approved in 2016, designated this parcel as low-medium density, which allows for the proposed 47 by 115 size lots. The preliminary plat includes the main entry point off of Hillside Drive, which is right in the center. The secondary drive is attached also with parcel D2. The parcel includes one neighborhood green near the entry and all of the riards back up to open space. The proposed preliminary plat has been reviewed by staff and found in compliance with the city's applicable codes, as well as the Lucero PAD. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the item on May 30. And this concludes my presentation. Pete Tyke is available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anybody want to speak? All right, let's go on. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, a second from Councilman Hampton. A motion, a second to approve the request for the preliminary, preliminary plat for Estrella, 11.D1, subject to stipulations. And we, so I, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? The ayes have it. I guess we didn't do council discussion on that, did I? Kind of skipped through that.
What happened?
Did we have a problem?
Yeah, we had a bug. Sorry. We're, we're good. We just covered in the bug. She scared me to death.
Well, we voted, and I didn't get any council discussion on it. Was, was there anything the council want to say on this?
I just wanted to ask a question, but it has nothing to do with the vote.
All right, you got it. The mayor made her mistake. Go ahead.
Okay, Alex. You, so the map is hard to read, and, and I even put my glasses on. So you said the entrance is on Hillside. Where is Estrella Parkway? Is it at the very top up here?
Estrella Parkway is on the south end.
Oh, down here.
It's.
Well, how do they get in?
There's two main entries on two Hillside Drive off Estrella Parkway. One is a little bit further south, if we go back to this. There's a main entry point on the south end, and then one near the Star Tower.
So they'll be going in this way, probably. They'll, they'll be going in past it and come back in. Okay. You're coming up the hill.
Okay?
Hey, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All set. The next item is 7.4, to consider approving the creation of a standalone communications departments. Our city manager, Julie Arundel, will be presenting. Julie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Over the past 90 days, I've been reviewing the communications function with the interim manager, past manager in the department. My recommendation is to elevate the stature of this function by creating its own department and reclassifying the manager position into a director level position. I can't overstate the importance of communications to our organization, to our internal customers, external customers, and our potential customers. Communications is how we share important information, brand ourselves, and tell our story. City departments are established in city code, thus an ordinance to amend the code as required to adopt this recommendation. Would that be, please, to answer any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Well, the city clerk, please read ordinance number 2018-1396, 93 by title only, please.
Adopt ordinance number 2018-1393, mending Chapter 3 of the city code, Article 3-1, Section 3-1-5, to create a standalone communications department, providing for corrections, penalties, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano, a second by Vice Mayor Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this before us. I'm a, I'm a firm believer in the world of news, I guess some of it's news, but there's a lot of stuff out there that you really got to do a second look at. And I think it's really important to make sure that the communications department reports to the city manager, and it all has to do with making sure we get our, our side of the stories out as well. So again, I, I've actually pushed for this well before you came on board, and I'm glad it is actually coming to fruition. Thank you.
Any other comment? Councilman Loretano?
I have to agree with Councilman Pizzillo. I strongly support this. I think it's a great idea. That's been one area we've kind of struggled with, and it might be because there were so many different levels and areas, so I think this will really consolidate that and get us our message out better and stronger to the public. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Any other comments? I totally agree. You know, we had a discussion on this, and I've, I've been waiting for something like this for a long time, and I, I think the council has, has said that all along, that they were a little bit, would like us to just go forth with a little more strength and, and be out where we should be talking about the city, and we haven't always been able to do that. So I think this council is ready to vote for it. So a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right. We're going to 7.5, a business to recognize the vacancy on the city council. Darcy McCracken, city clerk, to present. Darcy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to accept the resignation of Councilmember Joanne Osborne and recognize the vacancy on the city council as of June 11, 2018. and recognize the vacancy on the city council as of June 11th, 2018. I do want to point out that the car and the agenda have the incorrect date for the council member Osborne's effective date. As per her resignation letter, the effective date is actually May 23rd for her resignation. As per the charter, once council recognizes the vacancy, they have 30 days to fill the position. The timeline has us completing the review of applications tonight, interviews being conducted next week. And the last step of appointing the new member is scheduled for June 25th, at which time the new member will be sworn in. The advertisement for applications ran in both the West Valley View and the Arizona Republic for two weeks. And the information was also up on the city's website and was also pushed out to social media. So the recommendation is for council to accept the resignation of Councilmember Osborne and recognize the vacancy on the city council. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you very much. I never asked you at the ready speaker cards or anything. Were there any?
There's no speaker cards.
Thank you. I skipped through that. All right. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
Still moved. Second.
I heard a motion moving, Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
I just have a quick question. Was there, um, any, uh, electronic malfunction or anything that would prevent anyone from filing their application on time at 5:00 PM on Friday?
The electronics all worked fine. Uh, what did happen is the applications that we had at the front counter, they actually should have been two-sided and they were only one-sided. However, the people, the two people that did come in to actually, um, drop off their applications, they were both directed at, when they came in, there's additional information needed. And, uh, they did both bring back and they were both told the June 1st deadline.
Okay, I'll save my other questions for later. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, let's vote on it then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now, Council, I'm going to let you talk about your, you know, comments, anything you've gone to and want to talk about. And then, uh, we are going to adjourn and go into another meeting. So I just wanted, we're going into a special meeting after that. And we'll have a break, uh, once we get the special meeting going, okay? So who would like to talk? Anything? Yes, Vice Mayor.
If I may, um, I am so pleased to let all of you know, I already know because I was there, that our mayor received Civic Leader of the Year from Leadership West. And I was very proud that, uh, she was nominated and that she did win because I won two years ago and she went with me when I got my award. So I was with her Friday night when she got hers.
And I appreciate that.
And I didn't know she was going to get it. But anyway.
I didn't know I was going to get it either.
So I just wanted to let y'all know that.
Yeah. Thank you. Sherry?
Uh, I want to let everyone know, I think I, I sent this to Jessica and I think I let you guys know. One of our Estrella, um, elementary school students made it to the National Spelling Bee, Lindsay Davis. Um, I think she got to the second round. I was actually watching this online to see how far she got. Um, so I think that's great to have one of our local public school kids make it to the National Spelling Bee in Washington DC.
That's wonderful. Any other comments? Councilman Hampton?
I went to the Goodyear PD Annual Awards Ceremony with everybody else here. So that was a great, a great event. The first time I've been to that before. So it's great to highlight all the good work that our police department is doing in the city. And, uh, yeah, it's, it's just great to see them being recognized for, for all that they do. So keeping it safe and, uh, yeah, being positively recognized.
Great. Any other comments down here? Yes, Councilman Pizzillo?
No, I was just wondering whether there was any demotions because as a result of catching the chief, which he doesn't like to be called out on, uh, he had mentioned that, I think there were some lieutenants that were going to be sergeants. I'm curious on that. You caught him off guard, uh, when he got the award.
Yeah.
All right, let's go on. Does the manager have anything to report?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Uh, anything, a staff summary? Anything you require a follow-up action from this council? I didn't hear anything.
No, Mayor.
Um, does council have any inquiries of staff? And lastly, anything else you want to put on the agenda for future meetings? Yeah.
The one thing we had.
Councilman Pizzillo?
The one thing we had talked about, I, I don't know if it's going to be on the, uh, retreat or, um, or it should need to be on the agenda about, uh, talking about our community funding that, that we do.
We were going to do it at the retreat.
Yeah, is it the retreat? That's fine. We, we, we were talking about whether the community funding, uh, because it's 114,000 and a $400 million budget, whether it needs to be adjusted or not adjusted, but have a discussion on that, uh, because of size, because it's been that for, for a long time. Whether a good discussion would be at a work session or if the retreat's fine, uh, that's fine. I just want to make sure we, we get that on somewhere.
So I asked the lawyer where we are on that.
Well, we do have it, um, queued up for your retreat in October, but certainly a council wishes to discuss it.
All right. That, that works out well. Any other thing? Okay, the next meeting will be a work session and a special meeting on June 18th. There's no further business and I'm going to, uh, adjourn this meeting, but then I'm going to start the other one. You can have a break just before the special meeting then. So this meeting is adjourned. And now I'd like to call to order the special meeting on September, I mean, September, June 11th. See, I want to go home, huh?